At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Brandon Brady from the Nazarene Church up.
Dear Lord, we come to you tonight humbled and grateful that we are your servants. Father, I pray that you bless everyone in this room with the knowledge and the capability to use the brain that you gave us. Please let us be slow to speak, quick to think, and let us listen to what you want done in this town. Father, we love you so much and bless these people. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Crone, would you like to lead us in pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thank you for coming for the February 28th, 2019 meeting. Item number two is attendance roll call.
Peterson, Swager.
Here.
Crone.
Here.
Alvedras.
Here.
Livinggood.
Here.
Hoffman. Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Item number three is a presentation and discussion by District Attorney Mr. Mike Boring regarding the Texas County Memorial Hospital. Mr. Boring?
First of all, let me thank you for the invitation to be here on behalf of the county. The commissioners greatly appreciate the opportunity to come and share some information with you about the hospital and the sales tax vote that is selected and are going to be held officially Tuesday. I've already taken care of that with early voting. So, I just, I think all of you have a PowerPoint presentation that we do in our program. I'm not going to try to follow through that program. I just want to hit some of the high points because of the limitations on my time this evening. We've got to be at another presentation here shortly. So, I just want to try to hit some of the key points. If you have a question as I go through this, feel free to jump in, interrupt, and ask a question. Let me start by just some of the basics. Twice in the last two years, or last three years, the hospital has literally been within a day or two or a few days of closing. It operated with monthly net losses from the time period beginning in about 2009 or '10 up until April of this last year in 2018 when the hospital facility was leased to a private company. From the period of 2009 up to about 2012, the hospital reserves that it had in 2009 were completely depleted and they were gone. The hospital was out of money and the operational losses on a monthly basis continued to accrue. From 2012 up until 2018, the commissioners were able to, or were in a position, they had to utilize $6.5 million of reserves that they had been able to accrue and build up as a part of the one cent sales tax the county was receiving. But at this point in time, those reserves have been used up and there's not near enough money coming in on that to finance or continue the operations of the hospital. Effective April the 1st of 2018, the hospital was leased to, like I mentioned, a private for-profit company, SRP, and they took over operations at that point in time and included with that was assumed the assumption of all liabilities occurring at the hospital from and after April 1st of last year. However, with that, the county and the trust remained liable and responsible for some significant things. Number one, there was a large amount of accounts payable and contract liabilities that were in place and that had accrued up to that point in time. And the county, in working out an arrangement with SRP, was required to continue to have the liability and responsibility to pay the accounts payable that had accrued up to and through March, well, through March up to April the 1st of 2018. And like any other landlord, the county remained responsible for maintaining the facilities, doing the repairs and maintenance on things like the roof and major fixtures at the hospital. At that point, on April the 1st, up to the present time, there have been significant payments made on the accounts payable and at this point, the best number that we have as of today is about $1,008,000 in accounts payable that remain on the books that were there prior to April the 1st. And there's about $1,002,000 in contractual liabilities that the county and the trust are going to be liable and responsible for. The other major issue that we're facing as a county right now is that the capital maintenance and repairs that are needed today are estimated at somewhere between $3 to $4 million. Over the next 10 years, that number is estimated to be approximately $6 million that's going to be needed for just taking care of the facilities. I can give you a couple of examples of what we're talking about. The roof is leaking and in bad shape. It's going to take $750,000 to fix that. The oxygen system is at the point it needs to be replaced. We're looking at about $1,000,000 to do that. The operating room needs some overhaul and improvements. We could be looking at up to $1,000,000 to take care of that with all the climate controls, humidity controls, and everything else. There are a number of things out there, smaller items but larger items, like getting the elevator operational, just some basic things. So, there's a lot, a lot to be done out there with the $3 million of accounts payable and contract liabilities that we have, and those are, those are on the books with us. Those are either going to be paid one of two ways. The sales tax, if it's passed, will provide enough money to pay all of that. And if it's not passed, then what will happen is on that $3 million roughly that we owe, judgments are going to be taken. In fact, two judgments have already actually been taken. There are other lawsuits that have been filed, a few, and several more demands have already been received. But on all of those, we basically have no defense. We owe the money. Judgments will be taken, and once those are taken, they will be collected by law by being placed on the adware and tax rolls, and assessments will be added to all the property in order to pay those judgments out over a three-year period. The first year, one-third of the judgment with interest will be paid. The second year, from the time a judgment is filed, another third, and then the third year, they'll be paid off. The commissioners have proposed a .4 or .5 cent sales tax for a period of 10 years to cover those liabilities and to provide some additional funding to take care of the improvements, the repairs that are going to have to be made in order to keep operating the hospital as it is. Reason I say that is just one simple example. With the roof leaking, that obviously you can't have that in the hospital for a number of reasons. The Health Department will not let you get by with that. It's obviously a mold problem, a health problem. There's a lot of things that go along with that. That has got to get fixed. You know, one of the questions that we run into is people say, "Well, how did we get in this kind of shape?" And the best example that I can give you for that is simply this. At some time in all of our lives, we've probably had one of those periods of time over a month or two or three that everything in the world that could go wrong went wrong in our lives. You know, wife wrecked the car. I mean, we wouldn't do that, but wife wrecked the car. You know, the garage door quit working. We had a hailstorm and had to immediately replace the roof and couldn't get insurance in in time. Something else happened, and oh yeah, the kid's tuition had to get paid. And, you know, all these things started stacking up and we were faced with the decision, "Wait a minute, I don't have enough money to pay off for all that right now. I've got to take care of the most critical things. It's got to be fixed today. I'll take care of some of that other stuff next month or the month after." And starting about in 2009, when all the reserves at the hospital ran out, that's how the hospital's been operating all, well, basically for 10 years. And, I mean, when you're losing money every month and the best you can do is make payroll and pay the bills you've got to pay to get Band-Aids in and aspirins, you don't have a lot of money to spend on roof repairs. You don't have money to fix the elevator. You don't have money to do a lot of other things. So, like, in some of our lives, the hospital board has been forced to say, "We'll push that back and we'll take care of it as quick as we can get to it." Well, we've been pushing stuff back for almost 10 years. And honestly, we're at a point that the pushback, there's, we're out of pushback. We're at the point something's got to get done to fix those problems. With this .4 or .5 cent proposed sales tax, the commissioners feel like that that will generate, based upon current sales tax revenue, about $75,000 a month or about $9 million over the 10-year time period. And that's what we're estimating to take care of the current liabilities, do the repairs and maintenance that have to be done now, plus a little bit more over the next 10 years. We feel like that's a reasonable number. If the sales tax fails, quite honestly, there's a strong likelihood that the hospital is either going to be forced to close or it's going to be forced to find other funding through inter-local agreements with partners such as the city of Guyman or someone, if that's available. Otherwise, simply put, the county doesn't have the money to keep it open. If closed, I think it's important to understand that the hospital simply cannot be reopened in any feasible fashion. Everything out there except for the OB department, which has been closed, cannot be brought into compliance with current code standards without the expenditure of an awful lot of money. And frankly, it'd probably be cheaper to build a new hospital than try to bring this one back into compliance. So, bottom line is, if the hospital's closed, it would be cost prohibitive to try to bring it back into compliance. If it's closed, though, that's not a decision that the county has to make. That's a decision the city will get to make because, under the deed where the county got that, there's a reversionary clause. If the county stops operating the hospital, it reverts back to the city. So, that's, that's where that is. So, let me just kind of bring this to conclusion, and I welcome any questions you might have. We owe about $3 million in accounts payable and contracts, and that's going to get paid one of two ways. It's going to get paid with sales tax, or these people are going to take judgments, and the judgment's going to be entered on the tax rolls and the property owners are going to pay them over a three-year period. With, with the forty-five-hundredths of a cent, we believe that arrangements can be made to satisfy all these liabilities and take care of the things that have to be done out there. Without the sales tax, though, those liabilities will get paid through assessments on the property owners, but the building's not going to get fixed. And if it doesn't get fixed, the short-term livelihood of the hospital, well, it's going to be short-term. That's simply where we are kind of in a nutshell. There's, there's quite a bit more information, I think, in the PowerPoint that I handed out to you that I won't try to go through, but I'd like to just open it up. If you do have any questions, I'll try to answer any questions you might have that are relevant. Any questions?
I have some. Thanks for coming, Mr. Boring. How many, how many entities control the assets at Memorial Hospital?
How many entities control it?
The assets?
Well, the facility itself is owned by the county. And the county leased in 2016, I think November, I don't remember the exact date, November of 2016, the hospital was leased to a public trust, okay? The public trust took over operations at the end of 2016. In April, April the 1st, effective April the 1st, a sublease arrangement was entered into where the, basically, the trust subleased the hospital equipment and everything to SRP, which is a private company.
So, did SRP incur that contractual $1.2 million?
No. They, the liabilities were far greater than that. At the time, it's kind of, it takes a minute to explain it. About three years ago, the hospital was literally within a couple of days of closing. A company from Texas approached the hospital that, this company called Little River.
Little River.
They had four hospitals that were operating in Texas. They approached the county and said, "Look, we know you're about to close. We know that's where you are. We'd like the opportunity to make the hospital work. We'll put in a half million dollars, no obligation, no recourse, nothing. If you'll let us come in and take over and see if we can make it work." They had a financial statement of millions of dollars, and it looked like there would never be another rainy day. They came in, put the money in, they invested over, I think, close to $1,500,000 in the hospital over a period of about 11 or 12 months. We got a call one day thinking everything was going great. They wanted to meet with us. They flew in. The commissioners and the trustees went out to the hospital, sat down in the boardroom, and they said, "Gentlemen, we hate to tell you this, but we've got major problems. We think we're probably going to have to file bankruptcy, and we are done." And they got on an airplane and left. The problem was when they left, by that time, all of our billing, all of everything at the hospital had been rolled over into their system, their accounting system, their billing system and everything. And when they left, most of that information left with them, and they were in bankruptcy. And we had a terrible time trying to figure out what we actually owed. And over a period after they left of about nine months or eight, they had seven, eight, nine months, we hired an individual that was experienced in operating a hospital to come in. He is still out there, Mike Carter. And his primary focus during that time was just trying to figure out, where is the hospital? What do we owe? We knew we owed over $3 million in accounts payable at that time. Thought it could be more than that. We knew we owed a significant amount of accounts payable. But by the time we kind of figured that out, we also realized we didn't have any money to keep the hospital going, and we were ready to, commissioners were ready to close it again. Mike Carter got with some other individuals. They approached us to take over operations of the hospital on lease to relieve us from any further liability at the hospital. And that contract was entered into, that's SRP. And so, we leased it to them, and their deal was, "Guys, we can't, we can't assume your liabilities. All we can offer to you is we'll take over from here and we'll try to keep the hospital open, but you're going to have to figure out how to deal with any remaining liabilities that you've got as of now because this hospital's losing money every month, and there's no way we can take on those losses for, for your operations. We'll just take them on for what we do starting April 1st." So, that's kind of how we got to where we are.
Who's going to, if this does go through, who will determine what accounts payable are paid first?
The county, the money will go into a designated account with the county commissioners. The trustees, actually, the attorney for the trustee, Corey Hicks, and myself will be involved, I'm sure extensively, in trying to negotiate settlements with these people and determine the actual amounts owed. Some of the, some of the folks, I think we can probably negotiate a little bit of a deal if we can come up with a way of paying them. But a lot of them, it's just black and white. I mean, we owe you $89,363, and they want their money. So, there's going to be some negotiation. The commissioners will have to approve all the expenditures of those funds for designated payments to a creditor. They'll have to approve the settlements, basically is what it amounts to.
So, are there outstanding judgments or lawsuits?
Yes, I've got two judgments now. One is for about a little over $12,000. The other one's for $252,000.
How long the contract with SRP?
I'm sorry?
How long is the contract with SRP?
It's long, I think the initial term is for 25 years. I believe that's correct. It's a long-term deal with options to renew.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
I have one. The $1.2 million that's in within contractual, that is not that incurred by Little River, correct? That is by the county prior to, because that was an LLC. That should be on the LLC, not the county, correct?
I'm going to try to answer this as politically correct as I can. Yes, there's quite a bit of that that was incurred when Little River was here. But the hospital during that time period was still being operated under the trust, and actually, when they first came, was still as a county entity. They came before November of 2016, I think, a couple of months before that. And so, there was, there was some of those contractual liabilities that were entered into prior to November when the trust was set up. And then there was more contractual liabilities entered into after November of 2016. And so, most of that liability is either under the county, the bulk of it's probably, well, the bulk of it's probably under the county. There are some under the trust. But a lot of the contracts they entered into on the front end early on with doctors, different things like that, and that was when we were still as a county.
So, in the event we, will we have to pay for what Little River's, being the LLC, will we have to pay for that in the event it doesn't go? Will that be applied to it is what I'm asking?
If the judgments are taken?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, and yes, we will. I mean, because those are, those liabilities are liabilities that were incurred under the name of the county.
Okay.
Significantly under the county, some under the trust. But when those judgments are taken, yeah, we'll, we'll end up, if that's where we go, they'll have to be paid with adware and taxes on the property.
My other question is, if we're going, do we have a final number that the vote is going to be for? Because you stated it was 10 years.
Well...
The number that we're...
Yes and no. I, we, I have a detailed, I say, "Aye," the county and Corey on behalf of the trust, we've obtained, obtained a detailed statement on all the accounts payable.
Okay.
Okay. But there are, especially with regard to the contracts, there are, there are a number of contracts out there that, that there is some question about what is actually owed on them, and we are trying to get down to an agreed number on those. And that's the reason I say $1,002,000. That, that could be plus or minus $100,000 or $200,000. And understand, there are, I have close to $1,000,000 worth of claims on contracts that I do not believe we owe anything on.
Okay.
They're going to be litigated. We could, and that's not included in the $1,002,000. And I'm taking the position, we're not going to owe that money, but we could owe some of more than the $1,002,000.
Okay. I have one more question, Mike, and that's all I got.
Sure.
With the TIF money that's coming from Seaboard, June of 2020, is that going to be applied to this or is that a separate situation?
No, I don't think it would be. No.
We won't use that towards the hospital?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Is SRP trying to collect back to accounts?
Yes. That's one of the things they've been working on, and, you know, there's, we feel like there've been some underpayments attributable to the, to the OB section that they're trying to collect. There've been meetings in Oklahoma City, actually at the legislature the last two or three weeks, trying to get something done there. Actually, there was a meeting this morning on that, and the commissioners have been involved. Jack attended that meeting this morning. They're trying to do what they can do, and they've, they've been working on making some significant changes in the billing and the collections. One of the things that nobody wants to ask about as far as stuff that's come out in the paper about the hospital's lost its license and is going to be, you know, and all that, I just ask you to take all that with a grain of salt. That's, that's malarkey. It's about the best thing I can say about that. It's, it's, there was an issue with the ER physicians, and you probably read a story in the Daily Herald that enumerated several specific examples of problems that occurred with the ER with, with specific patients. One was a snake bite, and there was, there were three or four others. Those problems occurred with the old ER physician group that was here. And bottom line is, SRP and the trustees knew that there were major problems with those docs and that something had to happen, and they had to be gone. And, and so, SRP terminated that and brought in a new group of ER physicians, which I think has made a significant change in the ER. I think the doctors working in the ER now actually care about people that are being brought in, and I think they're trying to treat them. The old, all the, this complaint that went in was based on all of the prior ER physicians and the stuff that they had done, which had, I mean, we all acknowledge, it was bad. Shouldn't have. But that was fixed with this new group that came in. And so, we're not, we're not concerned about, about the survey, and that has been complied with. Responses have been filed, and this last deal, the second deal that came up that spurred this last round of news was when they submitted their, when SRP submitted their response to that initial complaint. There were several sections in there, and Dave will understand this, like a legal pleading, there are certain words you put in certain places. And in those responses to them, in every section, you're required to acknowledge that you know if you don't comply and with their requirement, that they have the authority to, to close you. Well, one of the sections, they forgot to cut and paste that wording in their response, so they kicked it back and said, "Wait a minute, this, this will work." So, they had to cut and paste, put that in, and resubmit it. That's all that second round was. And, and so, I feel pretty confident, they feel pretty confident, that's all been resolved. Anything else, men?
If the tax does not pass and it goes to, to the property tax, the adware, does that mean the hospital probably will shut?
I don't know of any way at this point. I can tell you the commissioners do not have the money to fix the roof.
Okay.
To fix the oxygen system, to fix the operating room, to replace three major hot water heaters, to fix the, I mean, we don't have the money, and that's, that's the major stuff that we're responsible for. So, I mean, the tea leaves, I think, can be read.
Okay.
One final question is, so, what are the entities that control the bank? You've got the trust and the commissioners.
Well, the tax money will come into the county. Is that what you're asking? I mean, the...
The entities that are overseeing what goes on, the administration at the hospital?
At this point, SRP has the hospital. They're a private company. You know, I mean, the commissioners felt like three years ago when they submitted the prior tax proposal to the people that was, that was rejected, that that was an indication from the people of Texas County that there was a lack of confidence, that the county had the wherewithal and the ability to run the hospital through a county board of citizens of our county. Got you. And at that point is when they started looking for somebody to come in that's in the hospital running business to take over and run the hospital. And that's what, that's the reason they went with Little River, is that was what their business was, and that was the intention with them, and that's what SRP is. So, it's a private company, and they're, they're in control and operating the hospital. I mean, our...
You've probably already answered. What's the lease agreement there?
Our, well, our lease with them on the sublease, their obligation right now is to pay us, effective January 1, $10,000 a month to pay to the trust in rental or lease. The problem is, the hospital's been on a cash basis for a long time with all the suppliers, which means if they order $1,000 worth of whatever, they got to write a check to get it. But it's worse than that because most of these suppliers have not only put them on a, you pay what the part is or the supplies, you got to pay an additional 30% on these old accounts payable. So, they're forced to come up not only with their, their money upfront, which is not a good way to operate a hospital when they get something, but they got to come up with 30% to pay on what we owe on the old accounts payable in order to get something for them to use today. So, they have been paying, and I, we don't have an exact number at this point, I think we'll have that very shortly, on how much they have actually... I think we'll have that very shortly, on how much they have actually paid on our accounts payable, that they have to pay in order to get supplies. So that, that's kinda how it's working. But we don't, we don't have any say in do they hire what they, what they do, other than keep the hospital open if they can.
Gotcha, thank you. Any other questions, gentlemen? Mr. Warren, I appreciate you coming. I know you've got a busy evening.
I think, I think the appreciation goes back to you all for affording us the county the opportunity to come and just be able to share some information, answer questions. And if anybody has additional questions, the, the place to address those is with the commissioners or trustees, or you can call me if you can find me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's right. Item number four is public comments and announcements. Does anybody have any public comments or announcements? Item number five is the approval of the consent agenda.
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda, item five.
Second.
Got a motion and a second?
Crone?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson? We've got five ayes.
Item number six is discussion and possible action on approval of ordinance number 845 and ordinance amending section 10-423 of the Guyman Code of Ordinances for Prevention of Youth Access to Tobacco Products or Vapor Products, repealing all ordinance in conflict herewith and declaring an emergency.
Is this not already state law?
What you currently?
It is, but in our ordinance, it did not address the vape.
Oh, the vaping, okay.
So this, this is our old ordinance, plus vape is basically what it is.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 845 and ordinance amending section 10-423 of the Guyman Code of Ordinances for Prevention of Youth Access to Tobacco Products or Vapor Products, item six.
Second.
Got a motion and a second?
Crone?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson? We've got five ayes.
I make a motion we declare item six an emergency.
I'll second. I got a motion and a second.
Crone? Livinggood?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Have at it, sir.
You're doing well. Go ahead.
Is this a relay?
Agenda item number seven is discussion and possible action on approval of resolution number 19-04, a resolution approving the State of Oklahoma Department of Transportation Speed Zone Modification. And if I understand that this is out east of town on 54, coming into the Swift area, driving the Seaboard area?
Correct.
And they're gonna raise the speed limit up to about the biodiesel lane to 50?
Possibly raise, possibly.
Possibly.
Yes.
And then, since in the city limits, we need to pass a resolution.
I make a motion that we approve resolution number 19-04, resolution approving State of Oklahoma Department of Transportation Speed Zone Modification, item seven.
Second.
Have a motion and a second?
I'm sorry, who's seconded?
Mr. Livinggood.
Crone?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number eight is discussion and possible action on nominations of two trustees to the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group Board of Trustees. Anybody from the city wanna be nominated?
That's what this is. Any idea within it of, I think it comes back in May for the nominations, once it's done, but we don't have any currently, so.
How's your schedule?
Uh, busy, I don't, no, please don't. But, but thank you, no.
I don't think they'd want me.
Maybe I'll nominate me. So, so I don't think I'm hearing any nominations, okay? We'll, we'll take, we'll move on on that one, since we don't have nominations. Agenda item number nine is discussion and possible action on approval of the revised real estate lease agreement between the City of Guyman and the Oklahoma Department of Public Safety. That'll be on the 911 proposed building.
Y'all passed this last council meeting. We went through the process. Me and Mr. Petty have had many different communications with the state pertaining to the lease agreement. Once we had it approved, we thought everything was kosher. We realized there was some modifications with the language that the state forgot to strike from the proposal. This is an updated version, which states the utilities are different in this one compared to the one last time, along with the rental agreement is a little bit more to adhere to those utilities. I think it's fair to say that it's a good deal for both of us going forward, and hopefully we don't have to address this again.
I make a motion that we approves the revised real estate lease agreement between the City of Guyman and the Oklahoma Department of Public Safety.
Second.
Have a motion and a second?
Crone?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number 10 is discussion regarding current and proposed building fees.
Guys, I brought this as a discussion item, only discussion, to see which direction y'all would like to go, because of where I'm kind of proposing and which way we might go would take some time on my staff, along with Mr. Petty, if we go this route. I just wanted to bring it to y'all's attention. In my, go ahead, Mr. Swager.
I think, for instance, the building inspection, some of them, you know, right now, what, it's $25. And I definitely think we need to increase that, just by the fact that there's so many trips that the inspector has to make.
Correct. And you're right there, it's $24, and four of that's gonna go to the state. And it, and it pertains to different, depending on what the, the classification is. So if it's, take the, the building of the Hampton, it's been in the works for two years now, how many different re-inspections have we had to do? There's no fee to that. We need to not, I'm not gonna say hold their feet to the fire, but we need to cover our costs, because it shouldn't be on the taxpayers of Guyman to provide that service for an entity that is going to make money long-term. I, I just, I disagree with that, but we, we need to at least cover the cost for what it costs us, whether it's a re-inspection, whether it's a mechanical fee of $24. Well, how many trips will you have to go do out there? I mean, I'm not, I'm not shooting for the moon here, but I think we do need to at least have some sort of safe hold of covering our expense from the City of Guyman to where we're not eating this cost.
Yeah, currently, there's a lot of zeros.
Yes, it's way behind. And that's, I mean, this is just one of them we can go through, and I had my staff compare multiple municipalities to find out where they're at within their charging of fees. We're not trying to hurt business in any form or fashion. We just need to be able to cover our costs to where our, our citizens are not having to pay for that.
Contractors know, any other or bigger city, they have fees. There's permit fees, or there's almost for, for everything, there's a fee of some sort.
In two, in two occasions, whenever both of them came in, which were major, major construction projects, and we told them what their fee would be, they asked to make sure and get it in writing from the city manager that that was correct before going forward, because they could not believe it. So they knew, in dealing with other entities, that we were, we need to get that updated. So my question for you guys, and you don't have to make a discussion, I just wanted to know from y'all, and I'm kinda getting that, that y'all want me to move forward in getting Mr. Petty to work on drafting and updating our ordinance as it pertains to that.
Yes, I think so.
I mean, we don't need to have, there's no, but we do need to get caught up, so. That's all I needed, was just kinda, I wanted to make sure everybody, I can update y'all before I get going on this, because I didn't wanna, if y'all have a, a stronghold, the saying no, I won't pursue it, but...
Don't we, right now, charge citizens for, to come for a variance around $250?
I don't have that currently, but yes, within a variance, it is...
Within a variance, so, I mean, these, these all need to come up.
But it doesn't matter, the, the dependent, regardless of what your project is, whether it's a hundred million dollar project, or it's a hundred dollar project, that is the big problem you're running into right now, is it's, you're paying $24, and that's it. So we need to, we need to come to some common ground to where it's not a burden on the city to provide these services, because we do still need to inspect, we need to make sure it's correct. And a lot of it, and I give that to you, what we are currently charging with Cardinal Engineering for those inspections, those PEs to go through and finalize those projects, because they're qualified to be able to sign off on that. We don't have anyone on staff to do so. So we need to just cover our costs.
This is legit, I like it.
Okay.
Any other discussion, questions? Okay. Agenda item number 11 is discussion on the tornado sirens. Chief McPatten?
Got your running shoes on. In case y'all run me out of here. It could happen. So what this all boils down to, Mitch and I have been talking a little bit about tornado sirens. Some of the misconceptions that, about tornado sirens is that they're, you're asleep in bed, they're gonna wake you up, and you're gonna go get in your shelter. That's just not the truth. Um, it's, it's, in my opinion, data technology. And they're considered outdoor audible warning devices. These warning devices are meant for if you're out mowing your yard, you go inside and take care of your stuff, if you have the ball fields. And it's really technology that was big back in the 50, 60, 70s, in the civil defense era. So most of you know, we had sirens go off about three or four months ago, at all hours of the night. I'm sure most of you got calls, as did I. The best that we can come up with is that we were hacked, or that someone has put in a new radio system within a, a set amount of distance that is allowing them to somehow hit our tornado sirens. I don't know if I buy that one, just because the two sirens that I know that went off are on opposite ends of town, and none of them in between went off. So I think someone has hacked our radio waves, got into it. So with that, I just need to know which way we wanna go as a community. And doing the research, there's a lot of communities that are getting away from them, because we all have smartphones. Smartphones go off long before I can ever get sirens set off. They go off immediately when the National Weather Service sets them off. There's NAS, there's NOAA radios when people are concerned about cell phones not working. To get the, to get the sirens up to where they need to be, I'm gonna say on the low side, 30,000, on the high side, 50,000, to get them reprogrammed, readjusted. We had to take one down at City Hall, so we'd have to get, the old City Hall, we had to get it moved and remounted. So, you know, some of them may be able to be programmed. George was gonna come look at the different ones and see which ones could be reprogrammed, and which ones are just so old, they're gonna need all new systems. So I, I would just ask you all what y'all want me to do, pursue which way? Me and Mitch kicked around many ideas. You know, maybe it's something that our money would be better invested to buy $10,000 worth of NOAA radios, and if you don't have one, we'll come program it and give you one, if you're not gonna trust cellphone technology and new technologies. So I would just ask your opinion, or if you have questions for me. We're, we are not the only department that has been hacked, or the only municipality. The City of Dallas is the biggest by far, and about 170 sirens went off one night. So you can imagine the pure pandemonium with 5 million people, so.
I have a question, chief. What's a, what's it look like from a liability standpoint? Citizens of Guyman liability? You know, first of all, you know, you, we have to, we have to keep our citizens safe, so.
Yeah, and, and I, that, that's always my number one priority. I, I feel ultimately responsible for 15,000, 15,000 citizens that we have. So I think the liability would be more in, right now, if we, if we educate, I think we would have more liability in having the sirens, because people depend on those sirens to go to shelter. By the time I blow that siren, you better be headed to the right place or in the right place. It's too late by the time I blow a siren, because at that point, the way our city policy is written, a tornado has to be within seven miles headed towards Guyman. So if you're going 30, 40 miles an hour, you don't have long to get wherever you need to be. And that, that's definitely not the time to be calling to ask where a public shelter is, because it's, it's too late at that point. You better hop in somebody's house and ride it out. So in my opinion, I guess, and I've been here 20 years, and we've sounded the sirens once.
Would, would it not maybe be a better, as you said, utilization of the, of the monies on the upgrade to make sure that we're seamless with the NOAA, I mean, with the cellphone stuff we get, or our own deal? And then maybe just turn the sirens back on and see how lucky we are with, with them not being hacked.
And, I'm sorry, Dean, I'm not trying, the, the problem, and I'm, I'm not a radio frequency expert, but that is a extinct technology in my book. It is easily accessible, and I believe that is probably why the storm sirens are going off two days in a row, at 5 o'clock in the morning. I'm just saying, yes, we can change the radio frequencies to do it, but there is, and that's, I think it's fair for all five of you to understand, in the event we spend 40 or 50,000 dollars on this, it could happen again to where a hacking could, if someone has already accessed it.
I guess my point was...
It could happen again.
Mine was, let's not change the frequencies, let's work on these other things, and leave them on the frequency there are, and turn them back on and see if it happens again.
Was, is that 900 megahertz they operate on, or is it licensed spectrum?
I would have to, you're talking, you're talking nerve to me right now. I'm a guy that if I push the radio, I want it to work. I'm not a... I don't know the technology.
Over and out.
I, I can't answer that. It, it works on the same frequency that all of our pagers do, because that's how it, that's how we trip them, is we set off our pager tones. So George thinks that, you know, if we do reprogram them, and somebody does hack it again, at this point, they'll be easily reprogrammable, so it's not like it's gonna be $40,000 each time if we do get hacked. They'll be fixed, reprogrammed, and then we'll just pay him to come reprogram them if somebody keeps hacking them. And he still thinks it might be, like I said, some other organization in the area that has brought on a new frequency, but...
Is there a wired solution? To trip the, to trip the sirens?
No, and talking to Travis, there's not. There's just, no. Unless we, and we've talked to Tri-County a little bit, but it's just too, in my opinion, if that's the way you go, now I've gotta, not only, I've gotta call Tri-County, Tri-County has to go through their process, and now they have to sound the sirens, and you're just delaying even longer. At least now, I just call the station, say, hey, sound them, and they type in a code, and it goes across.
This could be like a teachable, teachable moment.
But from the liability standpoint, when you brought that up, in the event one does not work, you're probably held to the same accountability as what you are to make sure that they are functioning within all the standards, to say one didn't function.
I'll be honest, I'm on the fence. I mean, it's, it's old school technology, old school.
Realistically, everybody tunes in to the radio or TV station.
So within, and Dean and I can talk about it, because we've reviewed it 1,000 times, but whenever the one that came around last year with the tornado warning that we sounded off, it, it had hit our cell phones before our conversation ensued. It, it was already there, I mean, I was in my basement before Dean and I ever had a talk, because...
My kids were playing in the water puddles outside.
It was, I mean...
I thought we were dumb.
It, it's either way, I just, I want you to know everything is we're basing it off of 40 to 50,000 dollars, and 10 sirens throughout town is what we have.
And I personally think we need to go with the technology.
And there's, there's, the whole north side of town, Equestrian, out where the new station is, there's no siren in that area. So I would venture to say that my guys can't hear a siren unless they're standing outside, and it's not windy, it's not raining. So in today's world, we've insulated our houses better, we've got better windows, we've got music going all the time. I just, most people aren't gonna hear it in their house unless you live under a tornado siren like I do.
I understand the outdated technology and all of that sort of thing, and, but quite frankly and respectfully, I get tired of hearing that everybody's got a cellphone. Not everybody's got a cellphone.
Yeah, and that, that's where I said that...
And not everybody's got a NOAA radio. And so we would have to put a, a great effort into making sure that people did have the technology.
Yeah, and I...
Because we do have to take care of ourselves.
I completely, I completely agree. And like I said, the citizens' safety are my, that's my number one concern. That's what you guys pay me to do, is worry about the safety of the citizens. So I think we would have to be more proactive as far as getting information out early, you know, to tell people, hey, watch your TVs. That's, that's always been a number one priority, hey, watch your TVs. They're gonna tell you long before I ever know what's happening, because they've got people running around the county all over the place spotting, so they have the knowledge and the ability and the money to do that thing. So we might have, we would have... So, uh, we might have, we would have to be better about getting the information out early, um, earlier in the day, but most people in Oklahoma know that if weather's coming, they, they generally are pretty smart about, especially, uh, Texas County's a pretty smart county. We, we typically know when fire conditions are bad, weather conditions are bad, and we don't do stupid things, so.
I kinda like your first, first thought about doing the NOAA radios, kinda like you do the fire alarms for, for, for people? Where you can use it as a public service but also an instructional, one-on-one basis?
So, and, and I have contacted OEM to see if there's money to help with sirens. Um, they haven't got back with me, they're kind of in a transition phase, so, um, I don't know what kind of money they would have available. They might have money, so. Um, they're, we're not the only municipality that's looking at it and, and fighting it or, or worrying about this issue, but it's, it's out there. Things to think about. However, citizen safety is priority and we're rapidly approaching that weather system. So, uh, worst case scenario, we know that it's gonna be bad that day, we go turn the power on to all sirens and cross our fingers that they don't go off stupid, so.
Anybody? Any other questions, discussion? Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Agenda item number 12 is discussion on possible action on purchasing six new dry suits in the amount of $995 apiece. He thought you were done, you're not.
I could speak on this, but I'll let you, go ahead.
Uh, so, when we went down to Hurricane Harvey, uh, one of the things that we put in for reimbursement for, through FEMA was that they would pay for six new suits. Uh, that was a recommendation upon, uh, the Oklahoma USAR team. They were all contaminated with water that was less than desirable to be on our suits. Uh, probably had all kinds of chemicals on them. A few got tear, not tears, small holes in them. Uh, so FEMA did reimburse us, this is just finishing out the FEMA stuff, so we're, we would be done with purchasing of the equipment that FEMA paid us for.
Okay.
The funding has come in and, yes, I just, I know I could've went ahead and approved this, but I thought it was a good thing for him to reiterate their stronghold with Houston.
Discussion, motion?
Make a motion that we, uh, approve the purchase in six new dry suits in the amount of $995 each, item 12.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second.
Crowe.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five eyes.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chief.
Agenda item number 13 is discussion on possible action on approval of funding in the amount of $25,000 to the Chamber of Commerce for the Pioneer Days rodeo.
Lucky number 13. I'm Mitch with the rodeo committee, if you didn't know me. So, we came out and I brought George because much, much like Chet, not everybody has a cellphone, I'm a knuckle dragger as I told you last time, don't understand all the pushes that we're gonna try to do this year. Uh, we're gonna do a bunch of new things this year. One of the deals is, we're gonna do a senior steer trip in short go on Tuesday night, which will, it will, that's our biggest event and that's probably the most people who spend money on motel rooms because they are not staying in their trailer another night. What we're doing is extending them another night here for that group of folks, so trying to kind of bring them into the community. It's gonna help mills, restaurants, all those kind of things. Another thing we're doing is, I don't know if you guys ever were with, uh, remember Rick Furnish had the classic event where we brought 10 of the top finalists back, they had to go posteer and, uh, ride a saddle bronc? So, we're gonna do that again this year on Thursday night. Uh, that will also enlist motel, tax, restaurants and all those kind of things. The other thing is we're gonna let, we're gonna bring people into those events for free, so we're not gonna charge to come in that. So, if you're a family in Guyman and you don't have the money to go to the rodeo, you can go to both of those events for free. So, we're trying to kind of bring back to the community. Another thing we're gonna do is we're gonna go to all the area schools and, and I'm, we're gonna try to hit them all, I'm sure, we're hoping this will go without a disaster, but Tex Home, a Yarbro, Straight, Hook or Goodwill, everybody, Guyman, sixth grade and down, and give them all a free ticket, uh, for the Saturday and Sunday afternoon performances so that the kids that are sixth grade and down can come in, which would be 12 roughly, uh, kind of depending, trying to kind of extend an olive branch and bring those kids around. Because one of the things I think in our community is the rodeo's strong, uh, everybody will agree Pioneer Days, the culture of the, this area. I don't know, we, one of my things was trying to figure out, how do we bring culture back into where it's as important as it was when I was a kid or Sergio or Mitch or anybody was a kid? And, you know, we all remember those days. So, that's some of the things we're doing to try to extend that. Another thing we're doing is this year on the hospitality, we're going, we're giving it to, uh, Friday night is Tough Enough to Wear Pink, so Tough, uh, Panhandle Partners is going to do the hospitality. Uh, we charge, basically we make a quarter on beer in hospitality. So, we're gonna give that to Panhandle Partners Friday night and then they can ask for donations, but same thing, all of our sponsors and everybody can eat for free or whatever, but try to give that group a way to have a little fundraiser within themselves. Uh, Saturday afternoon is gonna be the YMCA, uh, thought with all the kids things we're doing, that was a great, you know, way to bring that in. Saturday evening, we're gonna try to extend an olive branch to Main Street Guyman, is gonna take it and try to have a little fundraiser within their, uh, group too. Saturday night's a big night, so we had to make sure we had somebody that could step in with, you know, enough people to support it. Sunday is open, so I'm gonna ask Convention and Tourism and City of Council if they would like to have that day. And what we'd like to do is you guys could either pick something of your liking to give the money and donations to. It takes eight volunteers, we provide the main dish, the meat and everything, you guys just provide the sides. You can get donations and you can get back to whatever you guys would like to do, so. Uh, thought it might be a way you guys could kind of get out in the public and, you know, I guess, lend a hand a little bit. So, uh, it's not a bunch of malarkey, I'm serious, we're not making that to you. That was a legal term I just learned. So, with that too, but with the ask, what we're wanting to do this year to Chet's point again, uh, not everybody has a cell phone, so we're gonna have to do all the same kind of advertising we've done, the posters and radio ads and all those things. I brought George here just to help explain, we wanted, originally we understood, Shay kind of helped us with this, understand it a little bit better, but we, it used to be that we had to advertise 60 miles out and we didn't see a lot of benefit in that, and I think you guys would all agree with that. We want to advertise 120 miles in, do pushes, Twitter, all those kind of things that I don't even know all the names for, uh, and try to hit that. There's a cost for that, to push out. I guess 900 megahertz, I don't know, that's what we're shooting for. We're gonna push out on that and I think if you step back and think about it, it's kind of a trial this year to see how that's gonna go. Uh, we really don't know. Uh, if you have questions on that, George would be happy to answer any of those.
You guys doing the Snapchat filter for those days?
All right.
What's Snapchat?
Ask the mayor what Twitter, what tweets are. So, we're trying to hit a lot of the younger generation, um, you know, a lot of the kids, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, Snapchat. It costs us to be able to put, um, a Snapchat filter, so it's particular for Pioneer Days. And we want the younger kids to, when they're snapping their friends, see that and say, hey, maybe I wanna go to the rodeo. But, we don't know the cost as of right now and that's why we're trying to get a little extra money so we can, like Mitch said, trial and error this year and hopefully we get more of the younger crowd because everybody knows Pioneer Days is coming around and all mom and pops are gonna go if weather's good. And we're just trying to bring back the younger generation in the communities.
Would your, would your GL fans include the fairgrounds?
Yes. I mean, we're, depending on the cost, if, if we can extend the fairgrounds even, I mean, it, it all depends on cost and what we can get done there. One of the things too that I failed to mention is we were approached this year to put the rodeo on TV at no cost to us because we, you know, have been, we were one of the 59 selected to do it at no cost and we said we would do that. We still need to get with PTCI and make sure that we have the power to do that, but, uh, that's another thing that's pretty cool that's come up this year due to, I think, you know, moving forward with everything. So, the other thing too is we'd like to do, and this is a silly city facility, and I've seen Pete Hedrick hiding back there, he can tell you the, um, the hospitality or what we call the hospitality is a city property and you guys rent it out or do something with that. One thing we'd like to do is table and chairs, new table and chairs for that. Uh, that's one of our goals this year. We're working with the OPSU art department right now to redesign the, uh, Henry C. Hitch Arena sign, I don't know if you guys have seen that, it's getting pretty dilapidated, it's time. I mean, that's a huge part of our culture here, we need to fix that, that, we're hoping we can have that fixed by, uh, rodeo time, so. So, anyway, that's kind of the gist of it. I'm serious about the volunteering, if you guys would like to do that, we can even put it toward the table and chairs, uh, or something, but I think it'd get you guys out in public and some publicity and then also be asking the 25,000 to try to carry on what we're doing.
Well, I like the fact that your, your budget actually shows a profit, uh, not only for last year but a bigger profit this year. And like you said, you, um, if you get that profit, you're, you want some upkeep on the Hitch Arena and I think it's a good idea and I, I really don't see a problem approving their request because I think it's, I think you're definitely headed in the right direction.
Oh, so, with some of the changes and, so we've had some success stories and I, I shared it with the Convention and Tourism group, but at the draw, so, we did a gun raffle this year, uh, instead of doing the duck dash, I don't know how many of you remember the duck dash, but it was a great idea, it just took a lot of labor and a lot of money to do it. We did a gun draw, which was a $6,000 profit. And then we did the drawdown this year, which usually averages $2,000 to $3,000. Uh, we changed it this year, we had the mill donate it, uh, tried to do, like I said, we just changed it a whole lot, we were able to make $11,000 and then somebody donated back their two that they'd won for a round total of the drawdown of $13,000, which is the best we've ever done at that event. And we're trying to do that all the way through this deal, but as you guys know, turning the ship is hard, especially at Sunset Lake, so now we're trying to get it going right. So, yeah, we've had a lot of, a lot of successes and we're building some momentum. We want to redo the box seats, that's something else we want to redo. Uh, you know, when, when those things come up, the first thing you hear, and you guys are well aware of this, because I'm thinking about the tornado siren, thinking, well, I can't tell my wife, well, we'll leave when the sirens go off. But, I, I think one of the things we hear is, well, the cement's bad under those box seats and we're not gonna be able to pull them and do that. Well, there's a lot of new technology that we're finding out there this year that we might be able to redo those box seats so that they're a little more pliable to your butt. So, there's some things out there, I think. We're looking at, we want to put money back in. We're having discussions with some other groups and private groups and trying to raise some money for some things out there, but as you guys know, that just takes a little time to get together and get it right.
Were you guys responsible for painting all that and the fence?
Uh, the, no, the city did that.
She did that.
The city did that.
That looks really good. And then the chain link against the fence, yeah.
That is Mr. Hedrick.
That looks really sharp. That looks sharp. Are you guys, who, uh?
And his crew, I mean, Pete's crew and them guys, they were. Yeah, I mean, they did a great job. And I'll be honest, it's, working with Pete's crew, kudos to you guys, they've been really easy to work with, so.
It hints Pete's crew, not Pete.
Any questions? I make the motion that we approve funding, the amount of $25,000 to the Chamber of Commerce for Pioneer Days Rodeo, item 13.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Swager.
Aye.
Crowe.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five eyes.
Agenda item number 14 is discussion on possible action on approval of bronze scholarship, bronze sponsorship in the amount of $500 to the Convention, Chamber of Commerce as recommended by the Convention and Tourism Board. As for the excellence in Ag, is that right?
I make a motion that we approve of the bronze sponsorship in the amount of $500 to the Chamber of Commerce as recommended by the Convention and Tourism Board, item 14.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second.
Crowe.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five eyes.
Agenda item number 15 is discussion on possible action approving acquisition of a sewage easement from the Union Pacific Railroad and issuing settlement payment of $3,000. This for a easement for the main big sewer line, we were gonna use the one for the new line, but we're not gonna use it, but we're gonna have the easement so we can use it in the future. We had enough invested in it, it's worth maintaining.
I'll let Mr. Petty answer that question.
I didn't hear the question, but.
Well, my comment was that it's for an easement we were gonna use to put the new sewer line under.
Yes.
But it was already in the, in the works, but we might as well go ahead and get the easement to have for future use.
Yes.
Since it's already done.
Right. This is, and, and too, we had condemnation action going with the railroad and this is in settlement of that and the, uh, terms of the settlement were more favorable than, than the condemnation award. And the contract that we negotiated with them is a lot, lot, uh, less onerous than what was presented to us by the railroad.
So, we'll have that easement when it comes time.
Yeah, yeah, it's perpetual.
Okay.
Any discussion? Have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the acquisition of sewage easement from Union Pacific Railroad and issuing settlement payment of $3,000.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Crowe.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five eyes.
Agenda item number 16 is possible executive session for confidential communications with legal counsel concerning pending litigation styled Edith Birdsville versus the City of Guyman and IBTS Community Services LLC, case number CJ dash 2018 dash 13 in the District Court of Texas County, Oklahoma, upon advice of legal counsel that disclosure would seriously impair the city's ability to process the litigation in the public interest as authorized by Section 25 Oklahoma Statutes 2011 307 B dash, B4.
I make a motion, we go into executive session, 16.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second.
Crowe.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five eyes.
We'll stand adjourned for executive session.
I make a motion to reconvene.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to reconvene.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Crowe.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
There was no action taken. Agenda item number 17, a new business, new business. All right, we'll stand adjourned as the Guyman City Council and we'll reconvene as the Guyman,
Big Choice Retirement or?
Let's go, let's go retirement, get it done. Call meeting or the special meeting, the Employment, Employee Retirement Board. Let's go, let's go retirement, get it done. Call a meeting or the special meeting, the Employment, Employee Retirement Board. Agenda item number two is approve the meetings of the four dash twenty-six dash eighteen meeting.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the four twenty-six eighteen meeting, item two.
Have a motion and a second.
Swager.
Aye.
Crowe.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Stand adjourned as the Guyman employment. We'll reconvene as the Guyman Utilities Authority. Then, agenda item number two, agenda item number three is discussion on possible action on annual renewal of the Infomart wastewater agreement. Agreement's attached and we're authorized.
I asked y'all to table that a while back, just in the event, we waited on some documentation and the update from Infomart, it should be current, and everything is conducive to what we're going with now, so I would ask for your approval.
Okay.
Make a motion that we approve the annual renewal of the Infomart wastewater agreement, item three.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Swager.
Aye.
Crowe.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number four is discussion on possible action on approval of scope of services and fee schedule for the Guyman Water Supply Study Project, and that scope of services and fee schedules attached. That's for the Bureau of Reclamation grants and some other things.
Correct. As we go looking for water, this will be part of Rick's fees and within the grant structure. That's what this is.
Make a motion that we approve the, the scope of service and fee schedule for the Guyman Water Supply Study Project.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Crowe.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number five is new business, is there any new business? Agenda item number six, report from city manager and council members. Anybody got any reports tonight?
Only anything I got, you asked me the last meeting, when the next blood drive was, and it's March seventh at the United Methodist Church from twelve o'clock to six thirty.
Do they have snacks?
They do. They called this morning. I talked to them on the phone.
Okay.
All right. Just a few things. I gave y'all some, a few letters that I had written as it pertains to some different action that y'all have made in the past couple council meetings. I wanted y'all to be aware of it. I also wanted to give you my workings with Panhandle State and the Grant Formula Foundation, sorry, Formula, but going forward, this is what I signed. I had given to Dr. Blanton over at Panhandle State. Proceeding forward, I wanted y'all to be aware of it and what I had signed off on, and I got back to him this morning with it. So, really, that's all I've got at this point. Yeah, that's all I got.
Anybody else get anything?
Oh, and the memo from Lynn. Sorry, she wasn't being able to attend. I told her I would get that to you, so I got it to you.
Pretty good rate.
All right. We'll be adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank y'all for sticking it out to the end.